Turn your mic on. There you go.
Good morning. I want to call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Are there any comments from the board before we proceed? All right, Madam Clerk.
Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
I see no one in the public who would like to comment, so we will be adjourning and going into closed session. We'll reconvene at nine o'clock. There's way too much chit-chatting in the back of the room. I expect you all can find something to say later. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors. If you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask for a few moments of silence since we have two people leaving. I don't know how we're going to manage that, but... Anyway, are there any staff announcements?
I have one.
What?
Closed session announcement.
Oh, yeah. It's a good thing that there's people here to help me through this. Madam Clerk, could you please read the result of closed session?
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. There was no reportable action taken.
Don't you ever wonder what we do in closed session? Because we're always reporting, there is no action taken. I can't tell you because it's closed session item.
I have an announcement.
I'm getting to it. Are there any staff announcements on... None, good, thank you. I'd like to move to recognition and... What?
Supervisor Mills has an announcement.
Well, it does. It's down here. Supervisor comments at the end. Did you want to make them now, Supervisor?
No, I just had one announcement on behalf of staff.
Oh, go, please.
Folks, you are aware that we did bring in 47 cats here recently, and I'm sure that focus has reached out and is looking for any assistance that you may be able to give them, either financial or toys, whatever you may be able to find. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. If you have a way to help them to contribute to that cause, please do so.
Very good. Okay. Does anybody have any other corrections for me? All right. Let's move to recognition and acknowledgements. We're going to do Brian first. Okay.
So we're going to take this out of order. We're going to do item three. This item is from the Administrative Office to adopt a proclamation honoring Brian Moss for his 29 years of dedicated service to the residents of Calaveras County and congratulating him on his retirement.
Brian, you have to come up here. I don't do this by myself. You know, with carpet here, you can't hear Brian clumping down the floor. You know, those of you... You always knew when Brian was coming because he really walks... I want to say heavy, but...
With a purpose.
With a purpose, so then we all knew it was time to get to work because you could hear him coming. Thank you for showing up. He wanted to go to The Rock, and I told him if he wanted a retirement check, he would be here. So... Whereas Brian Moss began his career at the Department of Environmental Health, currently known as Environmental Management Agency, on July 27, 1992, as a sanitarium, where he immediately demonstrated his ability and knowledge of the science of environmental health. And whereas as a result of his exten...
Yes, his second name.
Of his extensive ability and knowledge, Brian was quickly promoted to the position of Environmental Health Specialist II within the Department of Environmental Health on October 3, 92. And whereas a result of his continued dedication to public service and his strong competency in this area of practice, skill, and expertise, he was quickly promoted once again to be the Director of Department of Environmental Health. Whereas in connection with the reorganization that resulted in the Department of Environmental Health... Some of you are laughing, I can see that. Becoming the Environmental Management Agency, Brian became the Environmental Management Administrator on October 1, 2005. That's because nobody else stepped up, so we gave it to him. And he plays the guitar. I mean, you know, how many department heads play guitars? Well, you do.
Well, yeah, I do, on occasion.
Well, you could have brought it to them.
Well, that would have been good.
Yeah. Go out singing.
Play something in the key of E-flat, you know.
In addition to his duties as the Environmental Management Administrator, Brian also became the Air Policy Control Officer on October 9, 2010, because the Air Policy Control Officer retired, and he couldn't find anybody else to do it, and we cut his budget, so therefore he got to do that, too. Of course, of course. And he's always so happy. I mean, how many people do you know that he's just always happy? I mean, we would cut his budget, we would question him, you know, people would argue, and he was like always happy. It should be catching.
That would have gone screaming.
Well, that's... We don't care about what happens after hours, okay. During his tenure as the Environmental Management Administrator, Brian worked closely with Friends of the Calaveras Animal Services Focus... Yes! My favorite department is animal services, for those of you who don't know me. And to secure the donation of the facility used to house shelter cats, moved that facility onto county property and had it remodeled, probably without a permit. Whereas Brian was instrumental in securing...
The lawyer just fell on the floor.
...the county council.
It was permitted.
It was just sort of... Never mind. Cats, I moved to cats. So when the Butte fire came, I volunteered, and they had me do whatever in the cat house. And they said, "Talk to the cats." I said, "Well, what do you talk to cats about? I don't have a cat." Anything. So I'm at the cat shelter that he helped put together, and I said, "Well, a cat? Do you like my new polish? I mean, how's it going? What's going on here?" I mean, I don't know. Those of you who are cat owners, I don't know. What do you talk to your cats about? Brian happens to know what to talk to cats about. He was instrumental in securing board approval... That's a first. For the dedication of the land for a new animal shelter at the government campus. And I think the board support reinforced that at our last board meeting. Whereas on July 25, 2015, in recognition of his outstanding commitment to the county and vast knowledge of environmental science and other issues facing the county, he was promoted to the position of Assistant County Administrative Officer. That's where people go when they technically have outlived their prior job. And served as the county liaison with FEMA. I don't know why I said that. State of California of Emergency Services, CAL OES. Both agencies merendear to the county's budget heart, leading the weekly multi-agency disaster team during a post-Bute fire and served as the initial county lead on the tree mortality task force. It's not over, so why are you retiring?
I thought somebody else could maybe do it a little bit better.
Tracy. Whereas Brian was once again recognized for his outstanding ability with respect to environmental health and water policy. Went further to a reorganization and became Deputy County Administrative Officer, Solid Waste and Water Policy on July 7. You should get a lot of jobs. Can you hold any of them?
Well, it's kind of like a little commercial. Give it to Mikey, he'll leave anything.
Okay.
That was me.
Whereas the County of Calaveras will sincerely miss the vast institutional knowledge that Brian has gained, and he's not going to leave any of it with us, that he used to carry the team of Calaveras County through his many years of dedicated service. And whereas his dedication to excellence in public service has been continually validated through his demonstrated ability to address a multitude of complex matters of concern to county staff and the citizens of Calaveras, always responding in a timely and professional and happy manner. Now, for my colleagues, say, "Marita, you know, you've got to open it to public comment. You've got to take a motion and do all that." Do you want to ask for public comment, Brian?
Probably not, but yes, please.
But I will. Is there any public comment on this item? Thank you, Mr. Segala.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. Boy, this is so delightful, but it's so sad that he's leaving.
Oh, but he's so happy.
Well, the Calaveras County Taxpayer Association, in recognition for his service to the county, would like to offer a $15 free membership to our association.
Hi, my name is Lori Janini, and I had the privilege of serving on the Response Task Force with Brian after the Butte fire. And we were kind of an emotional mess, and he never was. And he always showed up, he was always available, and he answered emails and answered phone calls. And that's huge when so much is going on, so I want to thank him for his service during that time.
Thank you.
Hi, Janice Singer with Environmental Management Agency, Tracy.
And Lisa.
So we go back, way back, Brian and I, back to 1991, '92. And I just want to say that Brian has the capability to build departments, build broken things up, and build his employees up. So we're going to really miss him. But on Marita's note, you could always hear Brian coming because his dates were always... You always just knew his walk. And his FaceTime to Brian was face-to-face time. And he never picked up the phone. He always walked wherever he wanted to talk to people. And he's going to really be missed, so.
Thank you. They came.
Hi. So Brian, you know, you have been my mentor, you know, since I came here. I was deployed to the Butte fires, and I found this place. I thought, oh, this is going to be a great place to work, maybe one day, someday. And I just want to let you know that your reputation goes across the whole environmental agencies across our jurisdictions. And I just want to let you know that you're very much respected throughout that community, not only to that community, but also to our stakeholders and our business operators as well. So I just want to thank you for being... For your dedicated service and for being my mentor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. I've been Brian's colleague and friend for 20-some years now, and it's been a pleasure working with him. And I've appreciated his humor. And something that hasn't been brought up is that Brian has a beautiful mail-order bride from Russia that's up in Idaho. She's waiting for him to book it. I know that she's going to be watching this, so I just want to shout out to Robinsky. And...
I don't...
I'll pay back for that one.
I don't want any of you accusing me of doing nothing. He's not talking back. Karen, tell me.
I know she's waiting patiently for you up there. I just want to say, it's been great knowing you for, what, 20 years now and working with you closely before I retired in the last few. And it's always been great to have him around. Makes you laugh even when times are stressful. It's been great.
We're going to miss you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't finished. Just be chill.
I got something to say.
Do you want to say anything, Supervisor?
Yeah. You know, we should... Brian, we should give you a whiteboard to go away with. Because anybody who knows Brian, if you had a question or you wanted to have more information, he'll take you as deep as you want to go. And he wouldn't hesitate to explain until you said, "Okay, I've had enough." But the whiteboard is always something that's stuck in my mind. That 2004 groundwater report that you put together, was that a REMA paper? And it became a standard in the industry that everybody refers to. As we were talking, Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Basin Authority, where did they go? They came back to Brian's work in 2004 to establish baselines. He worked for three years on that Groundwater Basin Authority, more than. Exactly. But then also the Eastern San Joaquin work in putting the plan together for the county and assisting us with that. And then turning around CAL recycle and solid waste. Remember the problems that you walked into, and you turned it around and got us on even keel with the state again. So you have a history of fixing things here. And I have your home phone number.
Yes, you do.
But thank you for your dedication to this county and your loyalty to the many citizens that are here and your staff that's worked for you. And I'm sure that their respect is something that will be carried forward, so.
And I have to agree that Brian has a history here. And Brian, I want to thank you. I've known you for a long time. And it's very difficult seeing you leave. Many of the people from the past was your... You're the last one that's leaving. But I've always appreciated everything you've done.
Thank you, sir.
And I have one other question to the Chair and County Council. If we don't get a motion or a 3-2 vote on this, he can't retire, is...
Okay, well, you introduce this. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed... No!
You mean a motion.
Oh.
Madam Chair, I will move this item.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Toffanelli, second by Mills.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know how I get through these meetings.
You need a vote.
You need a vote.
Oh, I thought I had to proclaim and then...
No.
Oh, I need a vote. Do I have a vote? No?
I vote.
Oh, he'll vote. Oh, I'm going to... I'm going to poll the board. Garamendi.
Aye.
Toffanelli.
Yes.
Mills. Callaway, I don't know. Yes. And Supervisor Stopperson here today, but not because of you. It's because of Kevin Wright. Okay, now, therefore, it be proclaimed... It be proclaimed the Calaveras Board of Supervisors hereby honors and recognizes Brian Moss for his 29 years of outstanding service to the residents of the County of Calaveras and wishes him much happiness as he begins his new chapter in his life. And based on what Mr. Banner says, it's going to be fun. So it's been passed and adopted by the board onto the county on the 25th day of February, 2020. Here.
Thank you.
Wait, Diane, can I...
No, well, I have one thing first. So, he's moving out of town, as you all know.
Diane, can you take this one more, please?
Marita was still talking. I didn't want to stand in the middle.
Oh, I can come, too?
Okay, Freddie. Thank you.
So, he's moving out of town, right? So, I have a frog plate, so he doesn't forget. Even though he lived across the river, his heart was really here. And this is for you to put your Porsche keys on it. Unless you want to leave it here.
And then you keep the plate and put the Porsche keys on it?
Yes. So, very, very nice.
Thank you so much. So, bye.
Ciao. One is your last day?
It's actually the second.
Oh, okay.
So next week.
I won't be here. But just leave some chocolate on your desk, and we'll call over.
You've got some contact information. And I just want to thank all the staff and all of the boards through the years and the tremendous support through the years because it's been a whole lot of fun. And this has actually been a very difficult decision because it's a pleasure and a lot of fun to come to work every day. It's always a challenge, and that's the best part of the job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item two is from the Ag Department to adopt a proclamation recognizing Kevin Wright for 13 years in the Agricultural Department, including seven years as the Agricultural Commissioner.
Now, I've asked Supervisor Garamendi to do this because he has cows, and that's as close as any member of the board can come to being in the ag business. So...
Well, I'm glad.
He's going... Kevin, you get it.
Well, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to be able to follow up on Marita's presentation because that was amazing. And Brian, congratulations. But Kevin, come on up.
Thank you.
Stand before the mat.
Thank you, sir.
The... You know, this is going to be a fun talk commission because there's... For those of us who think you know Kevin, when you read the talk commission, you realize, wow, there's a whole lot more to this guy than most people know. And it's my honor to be able to recognize you, Kevin.
Thank you, sir.
And also, you're just pretty much a good guy, so that helps out. So bear with me as I try to read this. Whereas Kevin graduated in 1969 from New York State College of Environmental Science and Forestry with a bachelor's degree in environmental science with an emphasis in forestry. And then Kevin spent four years in the Peace Corps between 1969 and 1972 in India, becoming fluent in Hindi. I didn't know that. Assisting with fisheries. And then Kevin continued to develop the skills in fisheries with several private fishing farms in Louisiana and California and owned his own fish farm in Oklahoma for 12 years. Kevin furthered his education, received his master's degree from American Graduate School of International Management in 1987. And then after briefly selling almonds in the oversea market, began working for the Stanllos County Agriculture Department in 1988, where he worked his way from summer help to melon inspector to agricultural inspector and then deputy agricultural commissioner for pesticides regulation. And then Kevin began working in 2006 as the deputy agricultural commissioner for Calaveras County, and then was appointed agricultural commissioner in 2013. And Kevin has led the agriculture department with a balanced management approach that encourages staff growth and has resulted in dedicated and stable staffing in his division. And Kevin has consistently focused on customer service and maintained an open-door policy as demonstrated by having the state's first agricultural commission department provide regulatory pesticide oversight for cannabis cultivators. And anybody who's ever stopped by Kevin's office truly knows that door is always open, and he's always willing to stop what he's doing and talk to a rancher or a farmer. Kevin has consistently focused on community service, becoming fluent in Spanish for more effective communications, communicating pesticide regulation to fast-speaking customers, and serving as ad hoc member of the Fish and Game Commission for Calaveras, the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and the Hardwood Advisory Committee. And then Kevin's department has met all the state obligations during the fluctuating budgets and cycles and changes in state regulations by carefully managing the department's budget and by seeking out and taking advantage of emerging grant opportunities such as Recovery Act of 2009 and weed abatement grants. That'd be invasive species, not cannabis. So, you know, and Kevin also effectively oversaw the development of weights and measures laboratory that was completed under budget by using scraps from leftover construction projects throughout the county. So he literally went and cannibalized stuff and built his own lab. Kevin is a remarkable guy, and if you ever got a chance to sit down and enjoy a beer or conversation with this guy, he's just a good... Just a good man. So I appreciate it. Madam Chair, may I call for public comment on this item? Is there any public comment? Justice, you look back here. Nope, there you are.
Sean Smack, Agriculture. I have worked with Kevin for the last 14 years. Well, I guess 13. I've been there 14. It's been a pleasure, Kevin. We have a staff of five, and we are a family. And Kevin is the dad of our family. So he's always watching over us, taking care of us. There was only one time that I can recall that I didn't like working for Kevin, and that was when he followed me into the bathroom one time to tell me I had a phone call. So that's just... Just kind of keep that in mind, Kev, as you go on your next adventure, that you don't follow women into the bathroom, okay? Thanks.
Work for him.
Hi, Steve Perez, Ag. Yes. Kev's been there for me for almost 14 years, like a dad. And he's not the only one that plays guitar. This guy rocks.
Justice Rasmussen, I was hired three years ago from Kevin. I don't think I was the first pick, but I think Kevin override the choice and brought me in, so I appreciate that. One thing about Kevin that everyone should know is he's a man of the people, a man of the industry, a man of the employees. He's always more focused and worried about, you know, their livelihood, how he can support them the best he can as opposed to himself. So he put others before himself, and can't appreciate that more. I would say on behalf of some of the industry, such as Young Farmers and Ranchers, Farm Bureau, appreciate how you've always supported us, gone to the meetings, talked about the pertinent info that you had to give. So, thank you.
No, Kevin, I'm not going to roast you, I promise. No, all kidding aside, Kevin came on board with our Department of Agriculture many years ago as a deputy, I want to say. And, you know, I remember talking to him and saying, you know, "Eventually, the Ag Commissioner will retire. You know, what are your plans?" So he didn't disappoint. He studied hard. He got through his tests, his orals and his writings. So then when it came time for him to step up, he stepped up and did a great job of filling those shoes. So thank you, Kevin. Really appreciate it.
You know, the chairwoman gave me one other thing for Kevin, and I've seen this photo in his office. But this is Kevin and his dog, sitting on a porch, you know, barefoot and shirtless with his dog. And every time I've seen this photo, I've thought, eh, good guy. And I don't know. Make sure the television cameras can get this picture. Everybody in the house to see. But, Madam Chair, should we...
Comments? Comments? Supervisor Mills? Thank you. Kevin, you've shown...
of the work that you had to do and your department had to do to maintain that within the county government, so. So, please, we got a couple comments.
Well, Kevin, I appreciate everything that you do and all the things that you, you're always there. Any questions that need to be answered, anything that we come forward with one of our constituents with a problem, you're willing to meet with us. You were, you were always there, and I appreciate that commitment that you've always had all of these years, and I wish you well and happy retirement.
Yeah. Well, you think I'm gonna let you out? I think Mr. Rasmussen said it quite well. The industry has a lot of respect for you. And I know you've been at the meetings, and, as I've seen you there, and thank you for continuing to support the Williamson Act and to support agriculture in Calaveras County. And I don't know how we're letting you go without finding another Ag Commissioner, so that could be your first job in retirement. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Did you have a bribe in the dressing room?
Is there a motion? So moved.
And I will second this.
All fair?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Five go? Four. Four, zero, one absent. Therefore, be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors extends their appreciation to Kevin Wright for his strong and effective leadership as agricultural commissioner, and be it further proclaimed that the Board wishes Kevin a long and happy retirement. Well deserved.
I will say a couple of things that just kinda popped in my mind. First one being is that there's only two people that I know of in administration that are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and one of them is the county council, and the other one is the Ag Commissioner, which is me. And so, my, my tenure comes up every four years, and I was lucky enough when, when that happened to, to get reappointed. And by a few of the members that are on here, I see one, two, and three, three out of the five people that were around the Board are still here, and they supported me. So I thank you for that reappointment. And, Marita, you were before that, but at the time you went there, but I know that you would've voted for me. So I did, I got four out of five, and that one who voted against me isn't here anymore. So I think that's probably speaks well of me. Other than that, you know, it's hard to retire when you've been doing something for as long as you have in a routine, you have a good staff. My job was varied, and we, I had a lot of different things to do. And, well, I couldn't have done it without the people that I had working for me. It's not, it's not my honor, it's, it's all of our honors, because one person can't do it. There's too much, there's too much, too much trivial little things that you have to remember, and you can't do it all. So, you have to have a good staff. And I was lucky that I had a good staff throughout the years. And so, I would like to thank my staff, and the staff that came before me when I was Deputy Mary Mudds, as the previous Ag Commissioner, all the inspectors that came through and went on to other jobs, and the ones that I have now. It's always been, they've always been great, and it made me look good. So I appreciate all of that, and I appreciate the support of the industry and the support of, and everybody else who are here today to celebrate this day. One last thing, and that is, now, why are you retiring? Well, you know, I bought this book, well, now it means you don't have a book, you have a, I get, or actually, this was a Kindle, so, and it was the Brief History of Time that I put on my, my, you know, the best thing. And I haven't had a chance to open it up. So, you know, everything I've been reading is just kind of like this regulation or that regulation, by the time I get home from my commute. I eat supper, it's time to go to bed, and I hit the sack, I don't have time to read. So this is gonna give me a little time to kind of reflect on the little bit of time that I have left. And something, you know, that I think that everybody needs to do in their lives is take some time to reflect on the meaning of, of life really, and what you have left, especially you guys with gray hair. So, anyway, that's all I wanna say. I just thank you all, and I had a wonderful time in Calaveras County.
Kevin, thank you.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Julia Costello from Foothill Resources. And I'm so glad I overlapped with this presentation to those two great guys. This was very moving and just speaks a lot for the county and the people that work here, and we're gonna miss them, huh?
Yeah.
So I'm following up on our presentation from January 28th in the public comment period where Susan Tribble talked about her great-great-grandfather and the lost Gold Hill House County Hospital Cemetery. And after this meeting, there were suggestions that the cemetery identification, to pursue that, was something that maybe could be handled by staff and wouldn't have to come back for a Board agenda. But it's now been a month since we appeared to you, and we haven't heard of anything from the county, so we're here to give you an update on where we are in this process. Our firm, Foothill Resources, has obtained signed permission from the property owner, Stephen Sloan of Los Banos, to conduct archaeological research on the property to identify cemetery boundaries. We've received a proposal from the Institute for K-9 Forensics to identify, to conduct the identifying survey, and that's for $3,000. And we forwarded these to Marita, and I think Gary, and some other folks. And by the way, Foothill Resources is donating all of our time to this project. We're a consulting firm doing history and archaeology, and we're just helping Susan because it's our county and it's a great project. There is some urgency in time limit if we're to complete the survey before the summer heat sets in, because the dogs can't work when it's too hot. So, the other part of that is getting the star thistle, which is covering that nine-acre parcel and the area that we think the cemetery is, to get it cut. And there has been interest expressed by the Vallesito Conservation Camp, the CDF, that they would be able to do that. And also, the Deputy Sheriff in charge of the jail crew said that his crew could also clear that. We would just need kind of permission to ask them and to go ahead. So we need approval of the investigation proposal by the K-9 Forensics. We need to kind of mobilize somebody to cut the star thistle out there, and we need a commitment to have the identified boundaries then surveyed and recorded as a parcel, which is the ultimate goal, and have it put in the county's name. We have submitted a request to the agenda, to be on the agenda for the March 10th Board of Supervisors meeting, and there we'll be, if it doesn't progress, we can discuss this and answer any of your questions at that time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Tribble. Good morning. I'm from Murphy's. This is also regarding the Gold Hill House County Hospital and Cemetery. Some of you might be wondering why it matters that we identify the cemetery of the 82 people who have been dead for well over 100 years. Why does it matter that we take care of this issue now when there are many other, more important, pressing issues to resolve? It doesn't fall under the category of critical, most important, or even somewhat important. So why now? The reason is because we know about it now. I didn't find out about where my great-great-grandfather was buried until a few months ago. I found out about a county-owned cemetery named Gold Hill House Cemetery, but I had no clue where it was. With more research, with help from many people, we all now know where it sort of is. We all know where it is approximately, but not precisely. That is why we need to continue this process now. If we leave this issue at the bottom of the priorities for the county to be passed on to other supervisors as time goes on, the cemetery's location could be lost again for another century. Our civilization believes in respecting cemeteries and the people who are buried there. Those who are buried in Gold Hill House Hospital Cemetery are mostly men who came to our county to search for gold, coming here from the East Coast or other countries, searching for a better life for their families. Many of them were unsuccessful in their quest, and they fell on hard times. Others were able to open stores, hotels, or saloons, such as my great-great-grandfather, and provide a living. These were the residents of our county and the pioneers who turned the gold, the mining camps into towns. Although it was mostly indigents who were buried at the county cemetery, these men are deserving of respect in their final resting place. In conclusion, this is a fairly simple matter to take care of. Just put this on the agenda, discuss it with us, vote on the proposed cost, and be done with it. And have a sense of pride that this Board of Supervisors accomplished what many in over 100 years have not, by identifying the Gold Hill House Cemetery location and reclaiming it as our own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there another public speaker?
Hi, good morning. My name is Danielle Maxwell. I reside in Avery. Marita, you are my district representative. This is my son, JJ. Many of you guys do know him. He works at the Calaveras County San Andreas Library. He also does pack and save. He attends Vallesito Transition School, the adult school now, which has been fabulous. I haven't seen any of our community leaders be there to observe it. I'd highly suggest going in there. They have done a wonderful job. JJ's last year at his senior year at Bret Hart, you know, quoting Queen Elizabeth, "Anus horopius." It was our worst year ever. The reason why I'm in this county is because I want to be in here. I love it here. JJ's school is here. He goes to accredited colleges here. I go to college here. We work here. We are productive citizens in our society. Why I am here today? JJ's diagnosis is Vatter Syndrome, hydrocephalus. He has a VP shunt, epilepsy, CVI, cortical vision impairment, blindness, brain malformations, vestibular disorder, scoliosis, missing right kidney, missing right radial bone. My kid was supposed to be a vegetable. He is not. He is a productive, adult citizen in this community. I am here today for equal medical quality care. We have Medi-Cal. In 17 months, I've been trying to switch my son from pediatrics to adults. We have nothing but troubles. The pharmacies will not take him on as new patients. You have a high turnover in PCPs that are even willing to take on new Medi-Cal patients. It takes three months to get in there, and the referral process is heinous. These staff are not educated how to write up the referral process with the correct verbiage. You could pretty much take VMRC, Valley Mountain Regional Center, and take the M out of it. In seven years, I've never received respite. This healthcare system is not a problem or crisis, is lethal. My son was hospitalized five days ago, and he was misdiagnosed by your guys' county. We go to Sonora. We travel an hour way to get prescriptions because they would not take him in as a new patient. And I'm not talking about Class III drugs. I'm talking about simple seizure meds that we cannot get because people don't know how to write stuff up. Awareness needs to be done, and education needs to be done, because my son's livelihood and many other people on the mountain is being affected by this.
Thank you for that education.
I would really like the Board to take a moment and want to realize my fear of waking up dyspepses with children and adults with epilepsy. The numbers are higher than infant SIDS, and to wake up to a cold body is a fear every day, and I shouldn't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
Right. No. I want you to consider your family members and friends and look into this. We should have equal quality care. Healthcare is not a privilege, it's a civil right.
I understand. Thank you.
You do not understand when my son's been hospitalized, I'd like to provide this to the Board.
Ms. Maxwell, your time's up. I will...
Thank you.
Get in touch with you. Thank you.
We've been misdiagnosed.
Okay. All right, the next speaker?
And they prescribed opioids during our medical opioids crisis to stop diarrhea, but I can't get some...
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And, Marita, I personally messaged you. You are my rep, and I've been dismissed by you three times via Facebook Messenger and by your support group. So I expect my...
Thank you. I, I hear you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Virginia Franklin, District Two. I've been here for five years on the same subject, and that is your marijuana program. I'll just refresh your memory. I made an application. Within 35 days, I rescinded it because it was such a mess, and I realized this is just another chaotic program that the county is incapable of managing. Peter Maurer refused my withdrawal. I ended up getting Josh Crabtree, the head of the Marijuana Eradication Team, writing me a letter saying, yes, she eradicated these growers who were on her place. I went to the courts. I filed a restraining order to boot these people off my place. It was my application. I've owned this property for 40 years. I have three parcels. The county inadvertently encumbered other parcels of mine that had nothing to do with this. I've tried and tried and tried to remove the incorrect dates that they have at the planning department of when the grow was shut down. It was shut down within 30 days, 35 days of the application. I brought all of this evidence to Ben Stopper. I'm sorry, he's... I brought all of this evidence to Ben Stopper. I'm sorry, he's not here today. I've contacted Jack since the very beginning. It's been five years. I've come before the board a few times. I don't know how many of you remember that. So I want something done. I want somebody to, either at the planning department, say, oh, yeah, all of your evidence is there. You did shut it down on August 5th, 2016. But there's been a refusal to do that, and then between the Sheriff's Department and the planning department, there was also, the guys who were out there were felony, violent felons. And so everything is there. Why is it that nobody can move to correct the mistake? You did take that whole cannabis thing and hand it over to Cannabis Bureau because these people can't handle it. They weren't doing a good job. Well, I'm one of the people that got slipped between the cracks. Diane knows because I've been to see her several times to get either on the agenda or something else.
Thank you.
So can we do something?
Thank you for your comments. We'll look into it.
Hello, I'm Pamela Richman, D2. I'm here to urge all of you property taxpayers to look closely, carefully at your tax bill. Do not assume it is correct. Several of us, working with hundreds of taxpayers, noticed anomalies, increases, backlogs in taxes. We took our concerns here into the Board of Equalization that subsequently provided us with a narrow analysis of just four of our respective taxes, which, though it's taken time, has assured us our concerns about tax assessor Leslie Davis are well-founded and that the problems we see go much deeper. Remember December 10th, I believe it was, 2019? She identified three of us by name here and said our taxes would be increasing. In her attempts to catch up, like a student turning in assignments late, she has made further errors. I went in to pay my property taxes last week. I asked if I had any supplementals and was told that I did on a replacement HVAC system installed in the '90s. There was some going-back-and-forth confusion over at the payment office and the tax assessor's office, but in short, this is what was said. A told me my house was built in the 1960s. It was not. It was built in 1937. I was told that houses, quote, "built in the 1960s," didn't come with HVACs. This is true. I grew up in that house from the time I was six months old, back in the late '60s. But in the '90s, my parents also built in the '30s, tired of chopping wood and wanting a few luxuries, put in an HVAC. In fact, the original AC is still working at my house now. Only the heating unit, which was experiencing glitches and hiccups, was changed out for a similar unit. We tried for a bigger, better one, but our electrical system cannot handle the load. As a property owner, you cannot be taxed on maintenance items like a replacement roof or a replacement HVAC. At the assessor's office, A looked at my permit and agreed there was a mistake. Mistake? It says clearly on the permit, this is not new construction or improvement. It's a replacement. But Leslie is trying to make good on a move intended to intimidate not only me and the two others identified at BOE on the 10th, but all of you. Property taxes are probably going up as the economy is doing better overall, though the housing market is not exactly hot in Mountain Ranch. It's improved. But check your taxes. Ask yourself why you are getting escaped taxes before your supplementals. Ask yourself if these taxes are truly yours, if you have improved your structure or not. Ask yourself for how long and when your property was in a decline in value. Ask yourself how many supplementals you should be getting in one year: one, three, six? Consider whether your factor base or value is correct. This is not a tax assessor who can be trusted to do her job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You really should have popcorn for this one. Good morning. Cynthia Sanchez, D2. We have owned our property within the family since 1946. We have never had an issue with our property taxes until 2012. In 2012, I had a conversation with the assessor's office concerning the unexplained reason as to my land and structure value flip-flopping. The response that I received made no sense at that time, which I just so happened to document. Therein started the problem in 2012, eight years ago. The problem happened again in 2017, which I went in in person and questioned and got a different response. Over two weeks ago, I received a 2018 Escape Assessment reinstatement tax bill: $3,220. I set up an appointment with the tax collector the following week. In that appointment, I asked why I would be receiving an escape assessment when I hadn't even received a supplemental tax bill on the rebuild of the garage that was burnt, now located at the top of the property, which was finalized in July 2017. In addition, I have still not received a supplemental tax bill on the rebuild of the main house, which was burnt, which was finalized in July of 2018. The tax collector stated that I should have received those supplemental tax bills before receiving the escaped assessment. I asked the tax collector if I would be receiving an escape assessment for 2019. She said no. When she checked her computer, there was one: $5,566. Since I only paid the first installment on my regular tax bill prior to December 10th, 2019, add the second installment of $2,374. My total bill is $11,161, and that amount does not include my supplementals, which I still have not received. I'm sure I will be getting one for each year. That makes four. The ramifications of the tax assessor not doing her job for eight years is having a devastating financial burden to the taxpayers. There are two issues. The deep decline in value status started in 2012 in the Mountain Ranch area and Moke Hill area. Forty-three out of the 60 APN submitted to BOE prove it. The other is the 7,900 transfer backlog. Terry will share just one of the numerous stories, which is creating another huge financial burden to those taxpayers. The numerous supplemental and escaped tax bills now being received by the taxpayers after the assessor's tiny five-year audit in January is indicating the proof she's not doing her job for eight years. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Terry McBride. We're back. We took a little bit of a break. When I started this whole thing, I said something to you, and that is, the ability to tax is the ability to destroy, not knowing back then just how bad it's been for folks. However, the ability to create the taxes as the assessor without oversight or repercussions of negligence, dare I say malicious negligence, is a travesty. Sort of like, remember 2008, when the banks lent out all these loans and this type of thing? People lost their homes. That can happen on this, and the banks didn't give a damn. Well, neither does the assessor, apparently. I have a friend from your district, Gary Toffanelli, who's now paying $1,000 a month on his mortgage because Leslie Davis's office sent four years' worth of taxes to his mortgage company, who is, of course, going to protect its investment and write one check. Now they have to come up with $1,000 a month. How many people can do that? How many families? Imagine having children. Now you got a bill for an extra $1,000. We're not talking a couple hundred. We're talking 1,000. There is a fiduciary responsibility that Leslie Davis has, and she has failed completely. That fiduciary responsibility is to the state, the county, and also the people of this county. And she is not being held responsible. By God, me and my two friends are going to hold her responsible because we ain't done yet. We had a meeting. Jack Guaramendi was there, and Dana Jorgensen was there. Dana Jorgensen offered her help. She stood up here and lied on public television. Go back and listen to it again. I don't care if she named my name. I don't care. I am watching friends and people with children and senior citizens being affected by these outrageous bills. Did you hear the number she gave you? Did you hear that number? The one I just said, $1,000 a month? How much overtime is that? How much time away from your family is that? And I find it really, really interesting that the values of the fire area was lowered. Isn't that interesting? Didn't happen in the rest of the county. How in the hell does that work? Also, where is the paperwork that proves that there was, in fact, a computer glitch? There should be technical paperwork. We've never seen it. I'm asking again. I want a vote of no confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Good morning, Gord. I'll be brief. My name is Justin Bachman. I'm the Midstate Regional Compliance Manager for the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring state and local governments with compliance with the Public Contract Code. I'm here today to offer our resources and assistance with any construction-related procurement questions the county may come across. As a public works compliance organization, we are well-versed in all areas of the Public Contract Code. This includes, but is not limited to, advertising requirements, bid thresholds, force account usage, emergency declarations, project accounting procedures, and the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, which the county is a participant of. Our services are free of charge to elected officials, county employees, contractors, and the general public. Our goal is to ensure transparency, legal compliance, and a level playing field for public works contractors. You can find more information about our organization, as well as my contact info, at our website, www.cifac.org. That's C-I-F-A-C. Thank you for your time today, and I look forward to assisting the county in any way I can.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Chris Niebuhr. I'm a Calaveras County parent businessman taxpayer for decades. I'm here today because I'm hoping to help direct my government down a course which will enable we citizens to be economically viable and crawl out of this poverty we're sliding into. My affiliations are Knights of the Vine International Lodi Chapter. Although I own numerous properties and businesses here, most of my operations are performed in the county next door, where we have a $5 billion a year wine industry. I am a winemaker in this county and am totally stifled and suffocated by the actions of this government center, which are the complete opposite of San Joaquin County. I'm a bonded winemaker with the federal government. I'm up against a wall with the planning department. However, today I am here at the government center in order to expand my winemaking operations to a C2 location, which I have a lease on. I'm heading to the planning department and expect trouble. I am asking for everyone here to observe this closely because social problems are like a wildfire. You've got to jump out in front of them and form a line of defense. The only way you can do that is to allow the citizens to engage in commerce. Please help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm closing public comment. I'm getting direction from two parties. I just made a decision. I'm closed public comment.
So it goes to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Okay. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I need to withdraw number eight.
All right. Withdrawn item eight. Does anyone else from the board or staff have an item they'd like to have pulled?
Item 10, Madam Chair.
All right. We'll move item 10. And not anyone from the public? Okay, close that. Bring it back to the board for a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
I'll move the remainder.
A motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, a second?
Second.
By Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 401 absent vote. Thank you. Mr. Mills, item 10.
Item 10 is from Animal Services. To authorize the Board of Supervisors Chair to sign an amendment to the current contract with county fairgrounds for lodging seized horses not to exceed $75,000.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, I understand in discussion that the $75,000 is to cover. My concern would be the original rental agreement that was put in place. Are we going to be okay to get through to the remainder of the year should some other event happen requiring the fair board or the fair to be involved? Or is this sufficient to get us to that end-of-the-year point? In other words, do we need to talk about $75,000 total, or do we need to be talking more towards $100,000? Just to understand where we're at.
Mr. Vanner? Evan, thank you.
Excuse me. This $75,000, we project to get us-
Evan, could you just identify yourself with the record?
Oh, sorry. Evan Jacobs, Animal Services Manager. Sorry, I'm getting over the flu. This $75,000 would cover just the initial cost of the seized horses. It's not going to get us through anything further. If there was a fire or disaster or something like that, it would not cover anything more than that.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, did you have anything else you want to add on that?
I'm just concerned that $75,000 may not be enough or might not give us enough as a contingency here to get us to the end of the year. I'd rather see this increase to $100,000 to have the buffer available.
We're going to be discussing the budget, and that might be the appropriate time to bring that item up. Thank you.
Lauren Ginetti, 39th DAA Calvers Kenny Fairgrounds. The wording, our contract isn't just for seized horses. Our contract is, it could be, you know, there's a disaster and you guys need to house people at the fairgrounds or other things, not just animals. So I'm concerned, what I heard was just for the seized horses, and that's not the contract. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I'm just, and we have reached the $50,000 limit, and it's not going to cover our current expenses. However, if there was some disaster, you know, it's kind of dry out there. There was a disaster in June, there wouldn't be anything in place.
Thank you, Ginetti.
Just, sorry, just to clarify, that wording about for the seized horses, that's just the description on the agenda. Lori's absolutely right. The contract itself is a larger contract. That was just letting the board know the reason we're increasing the not-to-exceed amount at the moment is because of the costs associated.
So we do not need to modify the contract?
Well, no, that's what you're doing. You are being asked to modify the contract, but that description about the seized horses was just for the board's identification.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Toffanelli, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
Good. I just wanted to express that. I appreciate the work that the fairgrounds has done to help us through this difficult time. I mean, from taking roosters to taking horses, helping out in the fire, and all the things you do, it's a very good partnership, and I'm glad we're able to fulfill our end of this financially. So thank you, Lori.
Mr. Mills?
Again, my point would only be that is this sufficient to get us to the end of the year? I don't want us to be coming back in an emergency and trying to make further adjustments. So if we want to hold off- So if we want to hold off, the amount that we're setting as a budget adjustment, I would be more than happy to do that. Just have this discussion about making them whole at this point, and then having a separate discussion later on the budget.
I mean, I can ask Mr. Alt, but we're going to be discussing lots of modifications during the budget update, and if that's something that the board wants to do with that time, we can adjust it. I don't know that we need to do it now, and I feel like we need to look at it in whole. Counsel, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
I was just going to say, from my perspective, I think it would be prudent to go ahead and approve this contract so that the fairgrounds can be reimbursed for, you know, services already rendered to the county. And then to the extent we need to consider, you know, an additional, obviously, we have an ongoing partnership with the fairgrounds, and I expect that there, you know, may be additional amendments to come. But I think this is to make the fairgrounds whole for what we've already incurred.
Mr. Alt?
I agree. She said artfully what I would have hoped to have said.
Mr. Guerra?
No, I was just going to say, let's pay our bill and move on.
Okay. I don't think we're ignoring that. I think we have another opportunity to address that budget.
And also, I'd like to echo what Supervisor Guerra Mendy said about Laurie and her staff at the fairgrounds and what work they had done, almost behind-the-scenes, unheralded. People really didn't see how much work was being done. The dangers involved with wild horses and all of the additional pieces that had to get into place to be able to handle them safely. So it's very much appreciated, even though sometimes not recognized. And thank you.
I do have a couple of questions for county council as far as what is being discussed when we go into the budget. This item is not on the budget as far as what's being presented to us and what's in our agenda packet. It doesn't mention anything about this contract. Will we be able to discuss this and send money towards it during the budget hearing that we're about to have later on this afternoon? Would it be legal? And second, would it be better to take this item and say we want to move it into the budget hearing and then open it up at that time later on? I'm just looking at the legality of it, because it's not on the agenda under that item.
So your concern is that this, or if I'm hearing you correctly, that maybe you're recommending that this item be tailed until after budget?
Until, put in with budget if we vote now, and then have, it'll be in the budget packet.
I don't think that they could be, the items can't really be combined, but what we, what you could do is continue this item until after you've considered budget, such that if the concern is that appropriations need to be made or things need to be moved first and to have them in the budget, then this could come afterwards, and that may alleviate that. I don't, I don't think, we can't combine the contract with the budget item. It needs to be its own item. If I'm, I don't know if I'm articulating that.
Well, yeah, that was my question, is if, can we do that? Because we're going to be discussing budget. This is a budget item, as far as what I'm saying, because we're being asked to increase-
So again, I wouldn't, I would not recommend combining it, per se. The approval of the contract does need to be a separate item, but it could come af, it could be moved until after the budget on the agenda.
Then can we speak about this particular contract and increasing the funds like Dennis wants to do during the budget hearing? Because it's not included in there, is what I'm saying. It's not in there. We have specifically items by the CAO that are listed there in the budget.
I guess I don't see the need. I mean, I think this should just be an item. Let's do it. Let's wrap it up. If the board, and the CAO, and the department feel that this unit needs additional funds for whatever purpose, then we can do that at the budget time.
Okay.
And that's-
I just had to ask a question, legal part of it.
I would respectfully ask that you move this item and that then we have a meeting with Mr. Alt and some of the other emergency services, so we can really hammer out some details and set some policy regarding this contract before we move forward with another contract. If we could just take care of, you know, I think we're $15,000 right now, over the limit, and so our cash flow is an issue, and we need to take care of that. And then subsequently, we need to also sit with, you know, OES and Mr. Alt and Animal Services, and really define some roles and set some policy, so moving forward, we can be much better at our jobs.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the public on this item? I'd like to bring it back to the board for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Guerra Mendy.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Mills, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes on a 401 absent vote. We are going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Item 13 is-
Nope.
No?
We're on item 12.
I know, I'm just saying we're going to be moving what I'm going to be doing.
Oh, okay.
Moving item 13 will be moved to after item 15. So we'll do item 12.
It's going to be, item 13 is going to be moved to after item 16.
After 16, all right, before? Al, did you want it after?
After 16.
After, okay.
13 and 17 together, please.
Okay. Fine. Madam Clerk, could you do number 12, please?
Item 12 is from Economic and Community Development, "To authorize the county administrative officer to execute and administer Amendment 1 to the California Complete Count Census 2020 Education and Outreach Agreement."
Good morning, Madam Chair. Board of Supervisors, how are you this morning? Kathy Galino from Calaveras County Economic and Community Development. And good news, on January 23rd, we were contacted from the state Census 2020 folks that they had an additional $53,700 available for education and outreach to all of our citizens here in Calaveras County. I sketched out a rough idea of doing very robust media through print, radio, and ads to outreach all of our communities, as well as our hard-to-count communities, which are in the high country, and doing community meetings through Arnold, West Point, Mountain Ranch, as well as San Andreas, Angels Camp, and Valley Springs, Copperopolis as well. So I'm asking for your approval and authorization for our administrative officer to execute this agreement.
Any comments or questions from the board on this? Mr. Mills?
Yes, Kathy, good morning. What kind of timeline are you going to have to be able to get this outreach completed before you actually get into the physical hard count?
So March 12th is when the flyers will start going out to people for the count. The count begins April 1st and will conclude April 30th. I am poised and ready, at your direction, to start moving this forward very quickly as far as print production, purchasing ads, so on and so forth. So I can move very, very quickly. You'll see things within two weeks.
Any other questions? Any public comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Motion by Supervisor Guerra Mendy.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Tuffinelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 401 absent vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forget it, Kathy. Thank you.
Move to item 14.
Item 14 is from the administrative office, "To receive a presentation on the advantages and disadvantages of a centralized versus decentralized functional area of procurement and contracts, and provide policy direction to staff for same for purposes of building the framework necessary to update Chapter 3.28 of the county's purchasing ordinance."
Bonnie, did you want to just take a one minute?
Okay.
One minute.
One minute.
What's the first word called? Password. In the game Password, we always used to say one minute. What is this? Told me like this. You get two. They're still warm. They're still warm. Hot off the press. Yeah, thanks. Well, I'm not laughing.
Thank you very much.
Oh, she never used to tell me that. Pretty soon, Dennis, get this guy on life. So Maria is flying off to Mexico. You don't announce that. You're flying off to Mexico sometime.
I don't announce for life.
You're talking to the microphone now.
One minute for all of this information.
I guess the cat's out of the bag now, I'm sorry. Party to breathe, I know where it's at. I know where it's for. She pitches me. Both of them. One on each side, and the stereo. We have the mixer back here, we can do a mix. Dog eating some drive.
For anybody that's getting that Windows 10 update, be doing it at night, please.
Yeah. Get your printer, if you don't have a printer.
No, I had a business that at 10 o'clock in the morning, it decided to do that update at 3:30 in the afternoon is when it finally finished. They literally shut the business down the whole day.
I was at a meeting at Encoa Bank yesterday. They've been closed to the public for Thursday, Friday, and yesterday.
Because of the update?
Their computer system. They couldn't.
Couldn't work it. Which Encoa Bank in Angels Camp?
Here in San Andreas.
San Andreas.
For Community Foundation.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich Administration. This item is a long overdue item that I am bringing forward to the board to have a very serious policy discussion with the board about the future of procurement in Calaveras County. What we are going to be, if I can find my arrow here, the next slide. At the agenda item state, you're going to receive a presentation on the advantages and disadvantages of centralized versus decentralized procurement and contract. And then I'm going to ask the board to provide some policy direction for staff, so that when I embark on the process of rewriting the purchasing ordinance, it is structured in a way that meets the policy direction that the board gives me today. So what this presentation is going to cover today? Why are we bringing this item to the board? Why is it such an important policy decision? What is the current structure of the county purchasing division? I'm going to talk a little bit about what our total spend is for services and supplies, and who are those big vendors. I'm going to have some discussions with the board about what our weaknesses are in this area. I'm also going to highlight to the board, for the board and the public, some of the major significant improvements that have been made, and accomplishments that have been made since my appointment here in, or, excuse me, Calaveras County. Former life flipped out, sorry about that. We're going to briefly get into the advantages and disadvantages of centralized versus decentralized purchasing. I have a recommendation for the board to consider, but it is simply a recommendation just to start the discussion. I want to hear from the board your questions, from the public, any questions or concerns, get that policy direction from the board, and talk about the next steps for re-crafting the county purchasing ordinance. And then we're going to talk briefly about the elements of what goes into our purchasing ordinance. So why are we bringing this item to the board? Well, in very simple terms, our state and federal funding sources demand that we have solid procurement and contract processes established in our ordinances and in our policies, and that we actively engage competition, and that we additionally meet all outside funding source requirements whenever we're using state and federal or other funding source dollars. They will oftentimes have procurement processes or requirements on top of our own. Calaveras County has been subject to criticism in this area for a number of years. We received some unfavorable reports from Office of Inspector General with regards to disaster projects, and we'll talk about how we corrected a lot of those deficiencies. But nonetheless, those criticisms are out there. We've been criticized by the grand jury for a number of years for not having processes and procedures in place where departments have just been basically allowed to run amok and do whatever they want. And outside auditors have equally expressed concern that we do not have the proper policies and procedures in place to ensure a solid procurement and contract functional area. Right now, our current structure does not support success in these areas. There are a number of delays, and at the end of the day, it creates an incredibly awful burden for the auditor's office and her staff, and this is a discussion I've had since I came aboard. It began with Rebecca Callan. I'm having those same discussions with Kathy Goan. They're not new. But the problem is, by the time it gets to the auditor's office, it's too late. The obligation has been created, and a vendor needs to be paid. What are some of the consequences for not taking immediate action to rectify these areas? Loss of future funding opportunities? Potential debarment? De-obligation of previously awarded grant funds when we're audited later down the road only to discover that we haven't followed procurement procedures? We could be subjected to numerous fines for violations of various local, state, and federal laws and codes. So the current structure of our purchasing division, and what I want to do is- And what I want to do is take you to government code which says that the board may appoint a purchasing agent and the purchasing agent shall have these duties. The purchasing agent shall acquire the goods and services for the county. Rent, equipment, contract for professional services. And the purchasing agent also has the authority under government code to enter into construction contracts for purposes of public contract code activity. One interesting thing that I wanted to point out to this board in this very last item, this very last sentence within government code section 25501. It says, "The purposes of this article, the population of a county shall be the most recent estimate determined by the demographic research unit of the Department of Finance." Why is that important? Because government code sets the purchasing agent's signature authority by statute based on a county's population. For counties with a population of more than 200,000, the board can set that limit to whatever they want. For populations of less than 200,000, that authority is for services is limited to $50,000. One thing that we don't do here that the government code has recently changed though is it allows us to annually adjust the purchasing agent's signature authority by an established consumer price index. And I haven't gone to the state's website to look that up recently, but today, the purchasing agent's signature authority is likely closer to 56, 58, maybe even closer to $60,000. But the way our current ordinance is written, it's limited to just that amount, the 50,000. But I wanted the board to know how that signature authority comes about and what it's based on. It's based on the population of the county. Within our own county ordinance, it very similarly mirrors what government code says. You know, there's an office of the purchasing agent established and the purchasing agent has all these responsibilities to acquire all the goods and services for the county and set the standards for the items that are purchased. For purposes of our ordinance, the board has appointed a purchasing agent and the purchasing agent is the county administrative officer. The county administrative officer of the purchasing agent can then delegate authority down. Right now, there is some authority delegated to departments. Departments have authority up to $10,000, between 10 and $50,000. Those acquisitions are approved by the purchasing agent and then acquisitions in excess of $50,000 come to the board of supervisors for approval. Here is the staff of the county purchasing division. The county administrative officer is the purchasing agent. And then you have me, the deputy county administrative officer with, probably it's the first time in the history of Calaveras, the only staff member with close to 29 years of professional purchasing experience in city, county and tribal, federal and state background as well. Right now, I heavily rely on Tony LaFazia in our office. She's the executive assistant to the C A O. I have spent the last two and a half years training her on contracts and bids, construction documents, and then we have an administrative assistant that prepares purchase orders for us. So, how much money do we spend and who are the big spenders? Your board is going to hear a little bit later today about our annual operating budget, which is roughly around 180 million. From the information that I pulled from my current financial management system for this current fiscal year, general fund services and supplies, a little over 29 million. General fund capital assets, a little more than 1.9 million. Non-general fund and all other special revenue fund services and supplies, more than 24 million. Non-General fund and special revenue fund capital asset acquisitions, about 2.3 million. I need the board to note that this information was captured from the class of services and supplies within our financial management system. That also includes utilities. So, a little more than a half a million we spend on utilities. Clearly, that is not a commodity or a service that should be considered when we're talking about procurement. So, I just need the board to know that I did not go through every single budget unit and pull out that number, but that's what that is. Facilities, capital improvement, a little more than four men and oops, I forgot to put in the road C I P annual budget approximately...
About 20 million.
About 20 million. However, having said that, please note that the majority of the acquisitions by the public works department are handled under public contract code and that authority is already delegated to the director of public works for that. So, our big spenders are public works, health and human services, sheriff's office, integrated waste management, information technology. And I'm sorry, got a little cut off there. And the facilities division of the C A O's office. I want to talk a little bit about these, these big spenders, these big departments. When I first arrived here, I noticed a lot of things that weren't right. Many, many things that weren't right. One of the best decisions this board has ever made is appointing Josh Pack as your public works director. He has local government experience. He understands that we have to have a process. He follows that process. We speak the same language and I am so pleased to have another department head, and there are others too, but that are as passionate as I am about doing the right thing. Josh has turned that department around where there was so much confusion and chaos before and runs a pretty darn tight ship right now. And I very much appreciate that because then that makes my job easier and then at the end of the day, it makes the auditor's job easier. Another department, this one might surprise you. Another department that has been absolutely the most cooperative in complying with procurement is our sheriff's office. It's a struggle. It's not easy to have somebody come in and say, "Guess what? I get why you need this, but we have to go through this process." We have worked diligently where we can to identify contracts that they can piggyback on because we don't have the staff right now to, you know, issue bids. My first tour of the jail and going to the jail kitchen, I got the opportunity to meet the amazing Sivani. If any of you know anything about jail chefs and cooks, they're very passionate about what they do and they have very strict regulations about how they cook, what they cook, what their menus need to look like. I came from an organization that ran two jails, five 24/7 operations. Walking into that jail, I could identify every product they were using. I understood the vendor they were using and I understood the system that they were using. They were so afraid that I was going to come in there and say, "You need to start bidding this stuff." No, I'd spent a number of years doing that. There was absolutely no economic advantage to be gained. But what I'm here to tell you, Sivani shops. They do due diligence to make sure that they're getting the best bang for the buck. So I just want the board to know that those two departments, and while there have been improvements in others, for the first time ever, sheriff's office has been able to order all of their vehicles and get them timely. And guess what? We did it in compliance with purchasing law. We have agenda items coming forward to this board where the sheriff's office is going to be asking for some additional authority to piggyback on some other contracts so that all of their vehicles can be timely outfitted. I am so excited. The greatest compliment that I received recently when our former county council, Megan Stead, felt left to go to Yolo County and her new boss started reviewing our agenda items and our procurement items because that's her new assignment over there. She pulled me aside and said, "I want you to know that my new county council said, 'Sure looks like your procurement folks have it together.'" And she said, "Well, we have an experienced deputy C A O and we have a very knowledgeable county council that is intimately familiar with procurement law and public contract code." So, things are getting better. I want this board to know that, but I can't thank departments enough for their cooperation. So some of the criticisms that we received, I'm not going to go through this in great detail. You all have it in your handout, but the feds have made it very clear that we are not meeting their federal procurement standards. We don't maintain records. We don't do price comparisons. We don't do the appropriate, I call them meebie-weeby's, minority business enterprise, women-owned business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise outreach. And we don't, and at that time, we were not including all the code of federal regulations in our bids if we even ever did a bid, but more importantly, our contracts that hold our contractors to the same federal requirements. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about this, except there is something very important I want to bring up. And it's very similar and it's the same complaint. We don't have policies and procedures and departments are running around doing their own thing. We responded and said, "Let's tackle the public works ordinance first and then we'll tackle purchasing." We did that. We brought the public works ordinance to the board. We updated that where the thresholds are consistent with those allowed by state law. That has created huge efficiencies in both the facilities and public works area. One of the interesting things that I discovered, I went back and I read every single grand jury report from 2010 to 2011 to date. And almost every single grand jury report, with the exception of, I think, two years, there was criticism. The single biggest criticism is that we have an automated procurement module that we have not implemented and we continue to do everything manually. It's, it's, it's a problem. We pay for it and we're not using it. And whether we decentralize or centralize, that is a system that will create efficiencies, will give us the ability to track commodity utilization, to make good business decisions about what we should be bidding, what we shouldn't be bidding, building internal approval paths, track expenditures on contracts and not to exceed amounts of contracts because prior to that, heck, we didn't even have written contracts. There's no methodology for tracking vendor performance. And it just snowballs. It's just, it's ugly. So that is one thing that we have to do.
So, would you kind of move on to where you think?
I ab- I absolutely will. So, let me tell you about what we've done so far. We have begun to include all the C F I requirements in all of our contracts and bids. We've standardized professional service agreement templates. I've developed requests for proposal, requests for qualification and invitation to bid documents. We track them. We maintain the legal files we are required to. We register projects with the Department of Industrial Relations where we did not before. We were the subject of two D I R investigations this year under projects that I had. We did not get fined for either of those because everything that we needed to have in place, we had in place. Now, remember Supervisor Tofanelli and Mills, when I was first appointed, there were things that you separately told me, "You need to look into this. We're not doing this." We're doing them now. You were absolutely correct. We weren't asking for certificates of insurance. We didn't have contracts. We fixed that. We've updated the public works bidding ordinance. Thanks to Josh, we are implementing job order contracting. We negotiate more favorable agreements for the county. We no longer use vendor form agreements if we can get away from it. We've updated forms. We've standardized our board agenda items. And there is actually some formal and informal bidding analysis and review that occurs where none previously existed. So quickly, let's get into the centralized versus decentralized. Centralized is simply that. It means you have a single department that controls and manages the purchasing for the entire organization. Ideally, a purchasing manager, the purchasing agent that oversees the department, sets the standards, creates the ordinance. In a decentralized environment, all of that purchasing control is simply left with the department and departments have the authority to purchase items as they have a need. Whether it's centralized or decentralized, the board has to understand there's a monumental effort involved for staff. It requires skilled trained personnel. You have to understand the laws, codes, rules and regs. You need to be knowledgeable about the commodities market and the economic trends. You need to be knowledgeable about commodity specifications. You need to understand the different competitive selection processes and when to use which ones. You need to keep current with all the modern business-like methods. It's a very agile, constantly changing environment that demands a high level of communication. We need to monitor vendor performance and we need to be staffed to resolve contract issues, invoicing errors, accounts, payables and all of those things that result from that. So, in a centralized purchasing environment, obviously economies of scale are probably the most obvious. You know, besides ensuring compliance with all the requirements, increased purchasing pool is very advantageous. We don't have a central store's warehouse here, but if we did, there would be more inventory control management. When it's centralized, duplication of work is avoided. We have strong policies in place. Most importantly, this thing doesn't want to go to the next page. Go. You know, we have standardized processes and departments are able to more focus on their own core mission and purpose. If departments are forced to do this work, it's going to take away their ability to deliver their services to the public. Here are the disadvantages of centralized purchasing. If you want it centralized, the board needs to fund it. It's as simple as that. But if you don't properly fund it and you don't properly staff it, then we're going to be in the same situation that we're in now and departments are going to complain that they're not getting their projects delivered on time. They don't get what they need timely. And then it just creates a lot of frustration and then departments will still go off and do their own thing. It doesn't take a lot to understand that really the pros and cons of decentralized purchasing are simply the opposite of centralized, right? The obvious advantages, departments get what they need when they need it. Decentralized, departments, their, their focus is taken away from their core mission. And what happens is, is you'll have the auditor's office asking for more staff to audit all of those claims because the auditor's office will be the one that has the burden to make sure that departments have followed the processes. And again, that happens way too late. By then, we have a payment to make. And again, that happens way too late. By then, we have a payment to make. And it causes delays with the vendors. So, Bonnie has a fantasy for what she thinks this should look like. I think that you should create and actually fund a purchasing division under the county administrative officer. I think you should appoint me as your county purchasing agent. The C A O, mind you, would retain all the same authority as the county purchasing agent. The board needs to know that. There are mail services and duplication funds that are currently under I T. I think those need to come under purchasing. Right now, our director of public works has authority, in addition to the authority granted to him under public contract code, he has delegated authority to handle all of his own R F Ps and R F Ps, and I'm recommending that that stay that way. He has a lot more control over meeting the federal and state requirements for hiring consultants and contractors to move his projects forward. I don't want to interfere with that. I think that authority should most absolutely stay with the director of public works. Whoops. Now, how do I go back? Real quickly, this is what it would look like. You would have the county administrative officer. Again, the county administrative officer retains all the same authority as the purchasing agent. You would actually have a qualified trained expert appointed as purchasing agent. That contract analyst would be an existing position. That's the Tony LaVazia position. But I would need a buyer, an office assistant, and I would need an I T business analyst to implement the procurement module to the county's financial management system. I've been the major team leader in implementing a huge enterprise resource and planning solution for a much larger county. It is a huge effort that takes dedicated staff. It is not something that you can just pull somebody off of their work and have them do unless you want to backfill it elsewhere. That's Bonnie's fantasy. But obviously, other options are to decentralize, right? Or maybe create some other hybrid form. That is basically the gist of the presentation. There are various elements of the purchasing ordinance that are included in your packet. I didn't want to go through all of those today. What I'm asking the board for is direction as to whether or not you want to maintain a centralized procurement function, which is how our ordinance is currently written, is that we're centralized, or do you want to decentralize it?
Mr. All, is there anything that you want to add to this? Or expand?
I guess I would suggest that the budget implications and the operational things are the responsibility of the C A O's office. I'd ask the board to stay focused on the policy-level issues. And as we wind through the policy-level issues and have the prerogatives of the board, then we'll bring back a recommendation that will have budget implications. Any recommendation that I make that would be going forward in the future would be contained in the C A O's recommended budget. So, most everything that's not policy-driven, I'd ask you to have us bring back later. Stay focused on what the policy-related issues are. Give us guidance on that. Expect us to work with what Bonnie referred to as the big spenders so that they're, and you see many of them here today, that they have input and involvement in how we develop the policy under the prerogative of the board today. And we'll bring it back to you for a specific recommendation after that.
Do any of the board members have questions for Ms. Rich? Mr. Mills?
I think the number-one situation that we saw with the Office of Inspector General's report was that we were having difficulty. Bookkeepers can go to a file, and they can tell you where that piece of paper is that shows that transaction. But auditors have to show you the trail of how it got there. And I believe our auditors are tasked with an enormous amount of time wasted to try to develop that paper trail. So, if there's a way that we could quantify the amount of duplication of effort that's occurring under a non-centralized system to really understand what would be the return on investment going into a centralized, I've been in both, in corporate. And there are pros and cons, but the problem that we have with government is compliance. And the majority of our work that we do in purchasing is compliance. So, I would like to move forward and get that authority under a centralized purchasing with the understanding that, for instance, as you say, with public works, there are things that they need to do independently. But we don't need six or eight different departments purchasing reams of paper independently because there's a lot of work that goes into doing that, which could be done in a single source. And when you start to deal in the larger quantities, all of a sudden, your numbers make better sense. So, that is simply my, you know, simple statement of how I look at this. And I do agree, we need to move forward.
Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Bonnie. As you know, I spent 20 years with the University of California, and I'll never forget that. When I started my career in the Office of the President, which is the center of the hub, I always wondered why the various campuses didn't do exactly what we said. And when I moved out to the ends of the spokes to the campuses, I realized why. And it was because it wasn't always relevant to the work that we had going at that spot. My first question is, clearly, we've had problems with this over time, going back to the Butte Fire. In your presentation, you said, when it was investigated by the inspector general, the reason we didn't have a policy was we were going to get public works stuff in order, and then we were going to get ours. This has been a problem that's been sitting out there for a number of years. Why are we just getting to this now? Going through that list of risk assessments, which are pretty onerous, why is this now coming to us? And why hasn't it been here in the past?
It's just the, so, when I first arrived, my efforts were focused on immediately fixing those things that I knew we would be subject to immediate fines for not being in compliance. Those things are able to be fixed without modifying or amending or updating the county's purchasing ordinance. And the Office of Inspector General report, as I understand it, was relative to disaster projects. And when those folks come on the county campus, FEMA and Cal O E S, they provide all the players. They get everybody in a room. And regardless of what the policy says, of what our own policy says, they say, "Here are the list of all the things you need to do." I can't tell you why those things weren't done. But this board has corrected some of that by hiring competent staff who have corrected those deficiencies in those depart, mainly in public works. And so, we told the grand, and in terms of the grand, so I can't tell you. I was brought on after a large jury. I can tell you that we told the grand jury that the first priority would be to fix the public works ordinance, and we did that. And now, we're here. We want to update the purchasing ordinance. I can't speak to what's happened prior to my coming here.
You could certainly-
And I think, in all fairness, in all fairness, there's been a lot of change at the top. And so, there's been some payoff, and that slows things down a little bit, too.
Well, you can imagine my position when I sit there and see all this saying, "The world is falling apart around us, and we're all going away in handcuffs." And this is the first time we've heard about, not the first time we've obviously heard about this, but the first time we've taken this on. Let me ask a question. What, you know, and I agree with the C A O that, you know, on the budget implications and that big staff that you wanted to put there, that is a budget issue, not the policy question that we have to do right here. So, what is the, you know, how is this going to impact job order contracting? We just went through that. And I know you're talking about splitting it out. I'm having a hard time figuring out the policy question because I've got job order contracting. I've got you saying you want to build a group of people in central office, but not our biggest contractors, our biggest users of our service. So, why would we build an empire over here and an empire over here? And it just seems like it's not quite cooked. Like, there should be, usually be coming to us with a consensus that everybody wants it to happen this way.
So, what the board needs to understand is there are two main functional areas of procurement. There's goods and servicing, and there's construction. The public works bidding procedures and job order contracting is all governed by a set of state laws that are separate from the laws that govern the purchase of pens and paper and fuel and the contracting of professional services or the services of consultants. Two separate worlds governed by two separate sets of state laws. So, they should not be mixed. They mean different things.
You know, I am not, I'm not so sure that there's a, I've been contacted by a lot of departments, and a lot of, there's obviously a lot of frustration around purchasing. I'm just not so sure that centralizing something makes it better. I think we just add more bureaucracy to a system. I want a system that works. And if we have a system that works, we don't have to worry about centralized, decentralized. People go through the area with the least amount of resistance to get things done. If they can't get it done internally, that's how we end up building shadow bureaucracies. So, you know, it'd be great, rather than say it's got to be A or B, for us to take a look at something that says, "Okay, here's a system that works." It's neither centralized or decentralized because that lends to power one place or the other. What we need is a system that works efficiently and quickly, and everybody would be on board with that. So, I'm certainly not comfortable making the choice one way or the other because I don't think it is a choice one way or the other.
Ms. Rich, on the one that Supervisor Garamendi talked about, the system, and you mentioned it that we paid for, that we paid for and are not using it?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. If we're, if we use that system, if we finally implement it, assuming that's something that you and the C A O think is the correct one, could we not then decentralize and have the other departments, unless they really choose not to? If they utilize that system, would that not help with some of the problems that you're addressing?
It will most definitely help. In fact, the two things that absolutely have to happen, regardless of one way or another, anyone that's involved in any procurement-related activity needs code of ethics training, and we must implement the automated procurement module. But departments have to also be trained on following certain processes, right? And regardless of the system, nothing prevents somebody from picking up the phone and ordering something that they shouldn't, right? That's a separate issue, right? That's called accountability and all of that other stuff. But we absolutely need to implement the automated procurement module. There are a lot of things that are currently happening right now that have fallen on the auditor's office where it's not appropriate because there really needs to be a separation of duties. And so, that will most definitely help either way.
So, when we have contracts, the, and purchasing orders, that is routed for review anyway through the C A O's office and through county council, correct? So, that does not change?
No, that doesn't change. That's a process that's in place in almost every single municipal organization where by code, council has to review any contract not written by council. Admin's role in reviewing that contract is making sure there are sufficient appropriations and budget available. And to also make sure that the contract's in line with the department's mission or any directives that are set by the board. And then, to the extent that there's I T-related issue in there, we always make sure that I T is included in the sign-off of any of those contracts. But where the automated procurement module will help is those contracts, because we use encumbrance accounting, are entered into the automated procurement system. It tracks the expenditures against the contract. It makes sure that there's sufficient funds available to even enter into the obligation. So, those things are very helpful, but they're two separate.
Okay. So, where are the departments? I mean, you've mentioned public works. You mentioned the sheriff. But where are the smaller departments on this, on decentralized or centralized? Has that been discussed with them?
It has not been discussed with them. It was brought up in department heads meeting that we would be bringing this discussion forward to the board.
Have we ever been fined, or have we ever not been given a grant due to what we're doing or not doing?
Not since I've been here.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, Mr. Tofanelli?
Yeah. When you're speaking of what we're trying to get done here, and being fined and so forth, we're only talking about state and federal dollars. As far as general fund dollars, and a general fund department wanting to go purchase a couple of reams of paper and stuff like that, this, we don't currently have a policy covering that. The current department heads under general fund dollars need 10 reams of paper. They buy 10 reams of paper under their budget. They have a budget item, supplies, and so forth. So, what you're asking to centralize that, does that take that ability away from them, what you're asking us to do? So, currently, you would buy 100 reams of paper for the entire departments of all the counties, even though it's not under state or federal dollars you're purchasing that with. That's, I guess, the question that I have. Are you taking complete, are you asking to take complete power away from all purchasing from those departments, whether it's state, federal, or general fund dollars? Or are you only talking about when it comes to state or federal contracts or procurement of anything that they're looking to purchase, like the elections department when they got the grant from the state for all that equipment? Taking that part away from them altogether?
I'm not looking to take that away from departments, and you have to understand that they're still the experts in their needs, right? So, they have to communicate, you know, there's that high level of communication that takes place. So, no, I'm not asking to take that away. And the board also needs to understand, as I pointed out earlier, there's already quite a significant amount that's delegated to departments already.
Yes. But you were talking about centralizing. I just wanted to get a clearer view of what you're talking about, those items under centralized purchasing. It's not, it's not everyday items, and it's going to be the larger items that have to do with state or federal dollars. Is that correct? Or is this going to be a blanket policy for all dollar spend?
Well, no. It would actually be, so, no. A centralized operation is just that. It says, "We're going to have an office that's going to handle this for you," with the exception of these things that are delegated to you.
That was my question. Then we can get into those items as it comes back to us and what actually is delegated to the department has that they're able to use general fund dollars on.
I noticed there's some department heads in here. Would you like to address this from your perspective, from your- Would you like to address this from your perspective, from your, from your operation? No, you want us to make the decision without your input? I have no problem with that.
Be brave, Mr. Pack.
Dying on the sword for the other department heads.
It's a well spoken, oh, Josh.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Callaway, members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation. I think the first thing that we want to highlight as directors is we very, very strongly support the need for a purchasing policy. I've worked similar to Bonnie in a number of agencies, both public, private primarily, in, in cities and counties. I also served at the time as a school board member. This is one of the only locations that I've worked that does not have a formalized purchasing policy. And the thing that the purchasing policy does is educates and informs department heads and purchasers on the policies and procedures of what are needed in order to do it successfully. And so without that, whether department heads or others have good intentions or otherwise, they may be making incorrect decisions and decisions that aren't in line with public contract code or with state law or with county purchasing guidelines without even knowing it. And so I, we strongly, very much strongly support that. I've worked in both, I've worked in decentralized. Most of the cities I've worked in, ranging in range from about 50 to 100,000 people, have all been decentralized where the, the individual departments did it ourselves. Those worked very well. I've worked in centralized. The thing with centralized, it can work really well, but it has to be staffed. It has to be fully staffed. If it's not fully staffed, the onus and the responsibility falling on a, an insufficient staff is simply overwhelming. And then you start seeing the blame game of where they're feeling understaffed, they're, we're feeling that our items aren't being the appropriate, the appropriate measure of, of respect and, and attention. One of the things that I would recommend is a hybrid approach. And first of all, I, I do support the policies regarding the purchasing and, and having standardized policies in place, and I think the, the previous record shows that we need something like that. One thing I would recommend, and I, I generally support a decentralized policy, I've seen the value of that, the flexibility and nimbleness. But I do support the opportunity for those who are acting as authority, as purchasing agents or deputy purchasing agents within each department, must have some sort of standardized training, support, outreach, whether it's through monthly or bimonthly working group meetings, whether it's through some other sort of formalized training in order to make sure they're up to speed so that they're upholding the standards and conditions outlined in all of those policies. So what I would recommend, and I think speaking from my department, and I can't speak for the other larger or smaller departments, is we do have the staff to continue decentralized. When I first came here in, in October 2018, we were more centralized. We were seeing issues relating to the, the logjam and, and, you know, staff-related. So Supervisor, or the previous C A O, Tim Lutz, had approved Public Works breaking off some, it, some of our work for our workload. It's worked very well. But with that said, I, again, I appreciate the need to standardize and cover ourselves for these issues. I said one hybrid would be decentralized with that opportunity for training. And I also believe a centralized is still necessary for small agencies who don't have the expertise or experience necessary to be able to handle that facility. If you're a department that has six or eight or 10 people, you likely don't have that capacity within your department. So I think there's still a role for centralized in some cases. So generally, hopefully I've, I've, I've shared enough with my general purview and, based on my experience, what my recommendation is. I'll be in the back. Hopefully you have the department heads provide their input, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions now or later.
Joshua's recommendation is a very, very, very viable recommendation, and it's something, it definitely, just a viable recommendation for the board to consider. That's something we can work with.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pack. Mr. Pack, if you, if we had a decentralized system as you suggested with all the training associated, would you need to add staff?
I would not, no. And I think we talked about some of the, one of the disadvantages of having decentralized is sometimes the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing, so you're losing some purchasing capacity or power by maybe purchasing the same materials or equipment with disparate processes. Having a working group that meets together and talks about that helps eliminate that by talking about standardized procurement processes. If you're purchasing reams of paper in large quantities and getting benefits, there's an opportunity for departments to come on board and get that, you know, quickly and be able to share in that saving. So I think there's a little bit of a win-win there within that. So, but like I said, right now with my staff, and again, I have about 83 people total, I have a business department. Other departments may not have that same capacity that we have to do that. Thank you.
Do any of the other departments want to address this? Or let us make decisions on your behalf?
I think they're described as the big spinners, Madam Chair. The big spinners don't have anything to say?
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. So I do echo what Joshua's saying is that, you know, for the larger departments, they do have the bandwidth to be able to cover what needs to be done. But for the smaller departments, I do see, I am part of the workflow for the contracts for risk management, and I do see some contracts coming through where we have the same services in different departments with different agencies. For example, paper shredding. It is a waste of time to be paying our wages standing in front of a shredder, so we do have shredded or different agencies come and do those services. And we use many different, at least three or four different companies, where if we combined those services, we could probably get a much better deal. I, in fact, put it in my budget last year to contract with an agency, but instead I piggyback on another department. When they have them come through, we have them pick up ours also, and they charge back to us. Where it's those type of things, and that's just one example, there are other examples, especially for the smaller departments, that we could use that centralized, and we could save money in those small departments.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ol.
So I might suggest whichever, whichever option we go with, with the policy, we've already heard some good specific practices regardless of the policy decision. There needs to be training for departments. There needs to be standardized processes. We need, which are documented, so any of the departments can go back to the reference material and see what the process is. We need standardized forms, we need standardized reviews, regardless of where they exist. So whether it's centralized or decentralized, we've already talked through a good number of things that if they exist or when they exist, will be able to help us make the, the system successful. And those are really operational things that I'll commit to you now regardless of whether the policy is centralized or decentralized. We will fit that in the package and bring that back and identify the timelines with which those things will be implemented, so we'll have a successful system one way or the other.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Dr. Oliver, Chief Building Official. I don't disagree with anything that the, the previous department heads have said. I think there's some wisdom in, in all of it. I would like to speak towards the efficiency model aspect of this, and that is that for anyone to be doing something repeatedly, that they get really good at it. Smaller departments like ours who, or just ones that don't do a lot of contracting, you're going to find that we may only go out to R F P. once every three years. We may only procure technology services once every five or 10 years. And that means that it's actually more time with staff, more money spent in getting caught up to speed on the process and then working through that process, whereas, you know, a department like Public Works who does contracts all the time, this is, this is no sweat. It takes almost, you know, very little time, and there's a very high degree of efficiency and effectiveness. I, I see the merit in a hybrid program just for that reason. Smaller departments or departments that don't do a lot of contracting could really take advantage of it and reduce costs and, and reduce staff time. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Segala, did you want to go before?
Thank you. Good, because we're in here.
Did you want him to go first?
Boy, there's a lot of information here. You did a lot of work. I, I wonder if maybe we're, the board is trying to micromanage a little bit with this to decide centralized versus decentralized. Actually, a combination looks like working. I think we'd have better government if we perhaps put a group together of experts and have them work on it in a study session. Doesn't even have to involve the board. It definitely has to involve the C A O. And then also look at other counties, our size, not, not, not big counties, but counties our size. What do they do? What's really working with other counties? And then after reviewing that, plus the knowledge of what's needed, I think you could, a, a recommendation could be put together for the board, not to centralize or decentralize, but a, a structure. If there needs to be an ordinance, you'd be able to vote on that ordinance. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Yes, it does. I like your thoughts. Put that in writing.
It's on tape.
I miss you being recorded.
Yes. Stan, thank you.
Good morning, Stan Moore from I T. Nothing new in terms of what I'm going to be talking about here. I, I think that there are places where centralized is going to have some benefits. There's a lot of the things that take place in I T. where the centralized service that I would be looking for is additional definition that the departments need to work on with procurement and purchasing, to have that well-understood purchasing policy, so that we all know what is expected of us, at what times will the departments have the ability to take the policy and go forward, at what points would we have the need to reach out to the purchasing and procurement area? I think that there are, are areas where that, where, where additional definition will help everyone. Within I T., a significant amount of the purchases that we do, we are really the ones that have got the expertise in terms of what we need and, and who the vendor should be and so on. Then we can reach out to the purchasing folks as far as assistance with interpreting the purchasing policy or with any questions with the contract. So I think that the hybrid model will work well. I like the idea of each department having individuals who are going to be a primary point of contact, getting those people together, and that can take place at budget development, and it can take place during the year also, so that we are out ahead of what those major purchases are going to be. And it is not a surprise when a contract comes around or I need to have this taken care of right now. I don't know that that means that that has to be a centralized model in, in order to make it work. So improving and documenting our purchasing policy, having the right people in place within the, each individual departments. We talked about examples of where there are, whether it's paper, whether it's the paper shredding. Interesting, now that I think about it, both bringing in paper and then getting rid of it. But another example could be on the I T. side, where there's, many departments procure their own mobile phones. So there are, there are samples like that in, in many departments where doing a centralized could, could make some sense. But I don't think that it's centralized across the board. I, I am a fan of what's being talked about with the hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. I'm going to just bring the discussion back to the board. Staff's looking for direction. Oh, Mr. Mills?
Yes, again, I'm going to reiterate, a return on investment or calculation of what, what this would bring to us, I think is important. I had said before, we talk about duplication of effort, and that has to be quantified. The standardized purchasing policy procedures, everybody drifted to this hybrid. I kind of understand what that is, but at the same time, I see the values of a centralized purchasing when you get to that point where you're large enough in your activity scale to make it worthwhile. But the bottom line is, is that we need to standardize on something. And that's what the grand jury was talking about, and I think that's where we need to focus as well, getting something standardized in place. But I would leave it up to the staff and their expertise to figure out what is going to be the best model for them to work and still stay within the boundaries of state and federal law in regards to purchasing.
So that model might look something like a centralized operation with increased delegated authority to some of the big spenders?
Um, you know, you're putting words in my mouth, I understand, but, but at the same, but at the same time, you know, I think it's important that we do have a, a module, automated module now. How are we using it now?
We're not.
Well, no, that's my question. How are we using it now? And if we did use it, what would be the benefits of doing that? We need to, again, quantify the value of it, of whether or not it has value, before we jump off that cliff and go in that direction.
Some of those were discussed on a previous slide.
I understand.
I mean, tracking, just being able to track what we're buying and from whom so that we can make good business decisions about whether or not we should be putting a commodity out for bid is monumental, being able to just track expenditures.
Well, thank you for talking about tracking, because when you're making purchases, you also got to come back to when is that purchase due to arrive? How does that fit within the workflow process of a specific department? Is it there at the right time? And the quantity that they need to serve the purposes they're looking for? And sometimes the departments, everybody will do it, they'll get into a position where it's, it's a sudden decision, a snap judgment decision, and, but it has a ripple effect over a lot of other things. So I just want to be sure that whatever policy we're driving to, that we take that into account. Thank you.
Does the public have anything besides Mr. Segala?
We were staff.
Oh, you thought Mr. Segala was staff? I think we all think Mr. Segala is staff.
I'm Will Moore from Valley Springs, and, and I can see where this centralized store idea is good for things that are repetitive, like paper and so forth and so on. But I was working on a construction job a long time ago. I was running a cat ripping rock. Well, the central purchasing people had awarded so many ripper teeth for this job. Well, I wore that out in one day. So I'm out there ripping with a dull tooth, and I can't order a tooth on that job without going through central purchasing, and they didn't have an, an authorization to buy another tooth for that job, for that job number. You know, they got all these job numbers, and they're, some are centrally providing equipment and supplies for these different job numbers. Well, there was only so many teeth in that job number, and, you know, ripping rock with a dull tooth is wasteful anyhow.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, again, the board, staff's looking for some direction. Are we going to be looking to get more information? Or are we willing to at least give initial thoughts to staff so they can proceed? Mr. Garamendi?
Yes, if we do a poll, or, I know you don't like to poll Madam Chair, but I would, I'm, I'm an advocate for either decentralization with a centralized policy or a hybrid of some sort. What I'm not for is building a bigger bureaucracy. I've got divisions that can do it with the people they've got. That's just clear, in case you want to bring that back to the budget discussions, you know where I'm sitting. And then if we decide that we want more information, I want specifics on when we're going to see that information.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the hybrid thing too. It, I'm not, I don't think it's right to build a big centralized thing going on where it could be difficult, we'd still have to staff it and so forth. And if we don't have the appropriate staff, then you're going to have problems with, with departments saying, I'm not getting what I need, I can't do my job. I, I think it needs to be somewhat of a hybrid, and we need to determine exactly what, in the policy, department heads can and can't do and spend money, and, and giving them the training they need when they're spending state and federal dollars, exactly what's needed of them to do that. And then we could maybe set some type of limit as to where it has to come back through. But that's all part of a hybrid type thing, and I think I'd like, when it comes back to us, at least some, some insight into something like that from staff in their discussions.
Mr. Mills?
I said my piece already.
You said your piece, okay. I too support a hybrid system. A concern I have is departments, however, is define each wanting their own purchasing specialist. So- specialist. So, I mean, I can see that happening, and the services and supplies when we do the budget, I think is an opportunity to see where some of the common denominators are. But I think that's enough for you, Ronnie, to go on?
It is. It absolutely is.
And it's also defining what departments are, you know, what departments, defining what the departments are, I think will be critical. We can say Public Works, Sheriff, Health and Human Services, assuming that they want that, but...
What I would like to do is have an opportunity to meet with those larger departments and, and talk about what that hybrid would look like and come back with just a very basic, okay, this is what we're looking at, these are the dollar thresholds we're looking at, get final blessing from the board and go back and rewrite the purchasing ordinance so we can put this to bed, do the training, you know, focus on, on implementing the procurement module and...
Yes.
In that process, answering some of the questions Supervisor Mills brought up about, you know, what's our return on investment for, for automating those processes and, you know, what cost savings, what cost avoidance do we have? We are just about to embark on development of the 2021 budget, so all department heads are going to be very busy. I would ask that the board allow me to bring this back for an April study session.
But the other, okay, yes. I would like to see the amounts, if possible, raised. I think 10,000, 50,000 are too low, but I don't know if there's any codes that restrict us to that because we're under 200,000 population.
We are for better or worse hamstrung by government code on...
On that?
...those thresholds, yes.
There isn't any other way? Okay, thank you.
Did we not raise it to 60,000?
So that was for, so there's a Public Works and how the contract, yeah, Public Works contracts are different. We, we do have to abide by lobby or legislature.
Okay, well, we can do that. That's, that's another subject. Mr. Guermande?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm not so sure I'm in favor of doing a full study session on this item. This seems like, this seems like an item that needs to be worked out amongst staff and the CIO's office and yourself, but I would, you know, I'm looking here at state and federal sources bold and underline demand, so I would like to know when we're going to see this in front of the board. Is that April you said?
Yeah, I thought we were talking about, and the purchasing.
Okay, so April we'll have an, we'll have the whole policy ready to go. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of a study session on this either. I think we need to get it done.
Make it an action, okay. That's fine. Three, Mr. Mills? Yes, okay. Anything else on this item? Okay, thank you, Mr. Betray. Appreciate it. Okay, like to move to item 15.
I told him to get the lights.
Item 15 is from Human Resources, to adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list by adding the new classification, salary range, and job description for supervising building inspector.
We, we pulled item eight, authorizing the changes to 1, 2, 3, and so what is it that we're gonna be doing here since you pulled the other item?
Okay, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. The item before you today is authorizing changes to position control list by adding the classification of supervising building inspector. This position is separate. The item that we pulled was changing the job description to an existing position. This is adding a classification that would supervise the building inspectors. I've worked very closely with the chief building official to add this position. He has made wonderful changes in the department, and with adding this position, it will add a consistency within the department and making, ensuring consistent training. And I, in fact, I, I think Doug's dying to, to discuss this, so I would let him describe what he is trying to achieve in the department.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. Let's just say I wanted to make the best impression in regards to this because a supervising position can be misinterpreted sometimes. So I was thinking about different ways to approach it, discussing whether or not it, you know, comparing us to fire departments and span of control, various other items. While I was thinking about that, something popped into my head that was unrelated that makes perfect sense, so I'm gonna tell you a story and then it'll all come together. While I was thinking about this, the idea popped in, you know, I haven't seen enough tractor pulls. I love tractor pulls. So why is that important? Tractor pulls, for the folks at home, you hook a tractor to a sled that has weight on it, and as you pull it, the sled moves, or the weight moves forward on the sled until the tractor can't pull it anymore, you measure the distance, right? One of three things is generally gonna happen. The weight's gonna become too much and, and you break traction and that's where you stop. The other, the wheels come up because the weight's not distributed right, and that means you're gonna leave the track, and where you leave the track is, they take the measurement. Or something's gonna break and things are gonna fly everywhere. Everyone loves watching any one of those three. It's loud, it's fun. Why is this, why does this compare to us? Think of your building department as a tractor that you're hooking up to this sled. The sled is all the goals that your board has established and everything that I'm trying to carry forward for you. We're throwing all that weight in the back of the sled. Your department is the tractor. Horsepower is your staffing, the weight is your staffing, and the weight distribution is your leadership. So the track is our public service. That's never gonna end, that track's never gonna end. We're gonna be pulling that weight all day long, right? But as we start moving forward with the changes and implementing all these goals, that weight's gonna slide forward, and it is already sliding forward because every time we go to implement a goal that your board has established, we find it for every item we want to lock into place, we have five other things that need to change now in order to accommodate that, and those five items generate five more. So that white, that weight's gonna keep sliding forward. What I'm looking for is to avoid those classic things that stop the tractor, and that is one, we don't have enough horsepower and that tractor stops. We break traction or we just can't pull it anymore. Or two, we don't have the leadership. That weight distribution is wrong, and my weight as the department head needs to be at the front to keep those wheels down so we can keep going down that track. If I have to go to any other portion of the powertrain, that weight comes up, and everyone's watching, just like a tractor pull, whether we succeed or we fail, and most people wanna see, you know, where we leave the track or where something breaks. We don't wanna see something break, we don't wanna leave the track. So what's a supervising inspector really do for us? A handful of things. One, it distributes that leadership. What I need is clear leadership in every section, and where we have the leadership, it's already proven to be effective. For instance, we have a strong leader in our code compliance section, and we have good standards, we have good staffing, they have highly, they're highly trained, they're effective. We place the department analyst at the front counter. Within a few weeks, we have better customer service, we've already got eight revised standards in place, we have retraining on the new permit software, we're expanding the use of that software, reallocating that leadership to the right place worked. What we're doing with the supervising inspector is just that, I need someone who can take the guidance on where we need to be in, in the field as far as effectiveness, efficiency, consistency, get that to someone who can be out there all day long guaranteeing that that standard is met, offering assistance where it's needed, and coming to me when there is something that needs to be met to continue to move them forward. This individual is also gonna act as the fire code official to kind of tie in the adopted fire codes. As, as your board's already aware, we're moving forward, trying to establish this fire inspector program, and I've talked to the fire districts repeatedly, we've had a hard time recruiting for a number of reasons. I'll be bringing that forward to your board in a study session later to explain the process on how we get there because we do have an inspector position on the books, but no one is really signing up with the qualifications that are necessary for a handful of reasons. One of the big reasons is we don't have a program. We don't have a program because we don't know what each fire district wants, and there is a process for that. So I need someone in a position of leadership who can act in that authority to be the, the conduit for the needs of each fire district that can help put together this program and then implement the training and manage that program. We'll have a fully developed fire program, we'll have a fire inspection and plan review program, we'll have a fully developed inspection program, we'll be able to manage the inspection program for cannabis and other businesses. All of this ties together into a need for a supervising inspector. I guess that's the best way I can sell it. And then I really wanna go to the fair now for some reason.
Mr. Mills?
I guess light was on first. You sure have a happy staff. I noticed they're very pleasant at the counter, which is very nice to see. If we're gonna have a separate discussion about a fire marshal or, you know, where do we go from here separately later, I'm more than willing to entertain that discussion. I see the value in what you're trying to do, and I know that it's been difficult for some of the fire districts and their level of participation, they just don't have the bandwidth necessary to do any piece of it. Others, like Central Fire, Murphy's Fire, Havens Pass, they have it, and they're capable. So, you know, you're dealing with an all-over-the-map approach is, is how do we support this countywide, and yet there are districts that have very definite processes in place right now that you don't wanna step over in, in trying to accomplish what we have as a goal as well. So I see the value in what you're trying to do. Do you feel that that impact, that fiscal impact is sufficient, or do you, do you think that this needs to morph into something a little bit different in the next budget cycle? I'm saying that, you know, we're looking at a fiscal impact 28,714. What would it be next year?
Well, we'll be, we'll be reevaluating as we move forward. I can, I can tell you that because of the process, let me take a step back and just say that you brought up a good point about the, the fire departments and, and each of their, their districts' makeups. Our goal is to support every one of them in a fashion that is standardized across the county. I've had some very good conversations with the fire chiefs, they're all interested in expanding this. I don't know how far we're going to expand it yet because I don't know the needs of each district, and I plan to be meeting with the chiefs regularly to develop that. It won't be something that happens in the next three months because of the, the legal process that's necessary to establish this. I will say that 28,000 is essentially, let's just say recognizing that we may have the possibility to recruit from within and train from within, which is a priority of mine to recognize the leadership skills in our own staff and, and try and capitalize on that before going to the outside. I will say that we'll be evaluating our inspection services across the board for this next budget cycle to determine what our staffing levels will be. Right now, we're stable, and by implementing this and slowly building on it, I don't expect a significant change in the next six months, but as we move forward, if we, when we, you know, implement this fire inspection program, there, there will be some additional workload, clearly, and we'll need to establish that and bring it forward to your board on exactly what this means once we know what each district wants from us because they're all going to be different.
Do you feel that you may end up having to do individual MOUs with each district to identify those areas?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, 'cause that's just one more piece of the puzzle that's gonna have to come into the next budget cycle. You don't think it'll get done this budget cycle?
I'm not certain. I can't make any guarantees on that, at least yet. I would hope to be able to bring back a much better picture in, in a study session. What I can say is that this is a small step, but it's an important step because the, the fire inspector position, the way it's written, it would behoove us to have that, maintain that job description and keep it there so that as we realize the full scope of any work that's necessary, we can add inspectors just like we add building inspectors when the workload increases. We still need that leadership, we still need that person there to coordinate and know when we're gonna need that extra person and coordinate with me on demonstrating to your board the, the, the needs based on the workflow.
I appreciate the fire districts and, and your staff and you for the work that you are coordinating. This has been a long time in coming. Many fire districts years ago wouldn't talk to each other. So it's great to see that there is a level of communication that's now going on and that they're talking to the county and they're trying to find some common ground. That's, to me, that's a breath of fresh air, and it will help improve our public safety. So thank you, and be sure to thank them for willing to have these sometimes tough conversations because we're, we're stepping in areas that oftentimes they don't wanna be stepped into simply because of the turf wars that have occurred in the past. So I'm glad everybody's kind of putting their swords aside and getting into some serious conversation on it. Thank you.
I will pass it on. Thank you.
Mr. Guermande, did you have any?
No, ma'am. Mr. Mills, I asked a right question. I wish there was a way we could take some of that weight off the sled, but it just keeps coming up from the valley and adding a little bit more as it slides forward, so that's not your making and very little of ours, but...
I have several questions. First one is, how many, how many building inspectors do you have right now?
We currently have three in the field.
You have three in the field?
Yes.
Are you contracting any inspections out?
Negative.
You are not at this time, you have in the past though. Your department has in the past.
In the past, yes.
And, and when you speak of a fire inspector and his duties, are you talking about he would review plans or submitted commercial industrial plans that are submitted for review and he would take over that part of reviewing and making sure they're compliant with the fire codes, existing fire codes? Or are you talking about the fire inspector that goes out in the field and inspects commercial industrial properties, make sure they're compliant with storing of chemicals and, and flammables and, and gases and so forth? What exactly are you trying to come across as what this position will be doing?
The original position that was approved that we, we're not proposing to eliminate, the, the fire inspector was a, a catch-all for all fire-related plan review and inspections. It was, it was intended to be that position to be the, the essential go-to, so if plans were submitted to the building department, you'd get a review from plan review, you'd get a review from the fire inspector. He'd also do the reviews in the field, do the site inspections, you know, he'd do it all. There's, there's a one tragic flaw in that that I see, and that is that you only have one, and if he's sick or if he's on vacation, service stops. The, the goal with the supervising inspector is to provide the same level of training and expertise, be able to provide that training down to staff, and then each building inspector who is certified would be knowledgeable in those fire inspections, and plan review would be knowledgeable in the plan reviews, and you'd have one person there to make sure that those standards are implemented and maintained. Now you've got three to four people in the field, there's no loss of service, you have a, a central authority to come back to if there's questions, and you have two plans examiners as well doing the plan review of all of these, all under one basic building department or, or fire, fire standard, if you will.
The fire districts have formed a JPA, and I think the basis, a lot of the basis of that JPA was to address some of these issues that you're talking about. So I think with discussions with them, that they standardize, not individual, so they standardize what they expect from fire inspector for each, for their districts, and then it's one envelope and not each district is different. I think that's the conversation you need to have with them as far as that JPA level so we're all on the same page. It's, well, I thought it was this district, that district, as long as you have a scope from them as a JP- from them as a JPA covering all bases, then, then you standardize the whole thing, and it'd be much easier for, for you or this position that you're looking at. I think that's the discussions that need to go forward with that JPA in each one of these districts.
I, I agree entirely with that. Two months ago, I met with the JPA, I met with the fire chiefs, and we established that that we are interested in one standard.
Yes.
And, and every district will decide which ones they're going to do on their own, the rest will have an SOP manual for each district on what we're going to be able to provide. So the first step for me is meeting again with them and establishing the legal process for getting the MOUs done. I've already mentioned to one of council that, you know, we've got an agreement, we're going to put together a boilerplate MOU to move forward to them, say if you want this, here's the process. Once I get that started, then I would be meeting with the board on a study session to, to explain the rest of the process.
The other question I have has to do with the 28,000. That's for the remainder of the year, and I'm, I'm assuming that's for the last four months or the last quarter of the year, since we're heading towards March and we're heading towards there. So, so I'm putting that out, and it looks like over four years, over four quarters of next year, we're about $112,000, $120,000 for a full year of this position. And Judy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The other question I had is, is ideally, your department is supposed to be on its own funding, whatever you take in, fund your department, however, because of the, back in 2008 and the crash, a lot of times, general fund was funding those positions. It doesn't specifically say where this money is coming from and who's funding this. Is it general fund dollars, or is it coming out of your department's funding?
Okay, so it is coming out of the enterprise fund. In talking with the fire chiefs, there was some concern that, hey, you know, we can't front the burden of this, you know, please don't, you know, this not, wouldn't be appropriate to bill them. I agree with that. This is a service we're providing to the community. There's already functions and code and law that, that, you know, in the future, we will be establishing fees for any services that are moved forward, but it's not charged to the fire departments. Whoever is taking advantage of the service will be charged the fee. Where was I going with this? It is, it is enterprise fund, but the one thing that I did make it clear is that we need the service before we need the fees. We have to get this started. The fire protection aspect is highly important.
And I don't disagree with you on that.
Very good.
Yeah, and I've always been a proponent of this in all the fire departments I've spoke with. Judy, you want to add?
So the, the position, I did calculate out what is left for the fiscal year, fully weighted, also add a C-step, family coverage, you know, so it is a fully weighted. Most likely, if we recruit, it would be less than, than the fully weighted.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions I had. Madam Chair.
Mr. Oliver, I think, I'm a bit confused. I, I thought part of the position, because we had trouble, you had trouble, we did, finding a fire marshal or fire inspector, whatever, that this would be sort of like a dual work. There'd be a supervising building official, and then they would also be doing fire inspector position? Am I missing something here? Because you said earlier, there'll be liaison with the fire districts with the JPA, they'll be doing project review. I didn't see that in the job description. In fact, I didn't really see a whole lot in the job description as it relates to anything doing with fire marshal or...
So the job description was, was written in broader terms so that it, we wouldn't lock him down into any one specific thing. Inspections are inspections. We have adopted fire code and the building code, so that allows them to inspect buildings, inspect new construction, inspect facilities as the fire code official. So adding the language acts as the fire code official, gives them the ability to perform all of these duties. And it is included in the job description, the limited plan review, which would include fire code review.
So getting back to what Mr. Tuffinelli said, they would be reviewing projects when they came in for fire code?
Absolutely, absolutely. My, my, I guess my, to clarify, yes, their responsibility is to do that work, but they are also going to be training others to do the work as well, so there's no lapse in service.
Are they going to be like a dual, they are going to be doing fire marshal work?
Yes. The future, the future of this is we have a supervising inspector that bridges the gap between, if, if we grow further and we need a specific fire inspector, this person will be maintaining, educating, training, providing guidance to any, any of our inspection programs.
So are you still going to be looking for a fire inspector position?
In the immediate future, no. I've talked to the fire chiefs about this, and in the agreement was, we're going to try this, see how this works, and, you know, we're not going to remove the fire inspector classification, we're going to leave it out there in case we need one to continue to move the program forward. I'll be discussing with the fire chiefs over time, and if it looks like we need to add one, I'll be bringing that to your board to hire that, that individual.
Because when I read the job description, I didn't really see any of those skill sets in the job description, and I felt like what I was hearing and what I was hearing here and what I read, I didn't see it. There was just one part where it listed everything and then it included, and it just said, oh, structural, fire, accessibility, electrical, plumbing, the same thing any building inspector would do. I just want to make sure that when you hire her, that she will be doing those things that were mentioned that were not in the job description.
No, by including in, in the examples of duties, compliance with fire codes, laws and ordinance.
And that's, I mean, that's fine. I don't, I don't want to nitpick on this. It just wasn't matching what I was hearing, the conversation today, and what the expectation is in terms of the relationship with the fire districts and what their expectations might be.
The, the important component there is the, the language that acts as the fire code official, because when you look at the adoption of the fire code, it's similar to the building code where if you adopt the building code, you adopt a position of building official. When you adopt the fire code, you have a fire code official who enforces all of that in the absence of a fire district essentially. So, so anything is deferred to us, that individual is going to be the, the lead.
I'm sure she'll do a good job. Is there any public comment on this?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association, we've got really good talent right now as a supervising building inspector. It's our building official. He's good. And I think one of the questions that the board and also the department would be interested in is what's the relationship between the amount of permits that we get, you know, income that comes from permits and the personnel? When you have government employees, it's very difficult to, to terminate public employees when the work goes down and there's not very much work to do. They're kind of kept onboard because it's, it's a real problem. It's a lot easier if you're contracting out to not renew a contract if you have a lower period of construction. So I think one of the questions that the board may want to know is what is the relationship between the income and the expenditures if we're considering increasing the expenditures, which I think we are? And even though it's not disclosed here, it looks like we're talking not 28,000, we're talking about over 100,000 annual cost. And so I would applaud our building official for his supervising skills and, and perhaps look twice at, at the need for additional staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segala. Did you want to address that in any way? I'd be happy to.
After you, ma'am.
Mr. Segala, this board in the past has laid off employees. It's been very painful when there's, when the revenue doesn't, and the building department is an excellent example, when there was no business and we had to do it. So they are, in essence, somewhat self-funded, and if the building official keeps coming to the board because he needs more general fund money, that would be a discussion we'd probably have in private with him. But I think your concerns are well versed. I mean, if he has the business, Mr. Oliver has the business and the revenue to support this, then I think the board is in the position of wanting to support it. And if he doesn't, then we'll be discussing that, too. But I think your points are very well taken, not only for the building department, but for any department. If there's no more public comment, no staff comment, I'd like to bring it back to the board for action, or to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, I, I would, I would make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
And I want to thank you for, Doug, for bringing this forward. It's been an issue for a long time, and it's been, it hasn't benefited all of our constituents when it comes to fire safety, what, what we've been having to deal with because of the smaller fire departments and so forth. But it's something that is very well needed, and I've been a proponent of it for, for a long time. And I think, again, with the JPA that the fire district formed, I think that's beneficial in being able to work with the county and you, and this person, when we get him on board, to get a standardized policy will be wonderful. So thank you again, and yes, I move this item.
Motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye passes on a 401 absent vote. Thank you. I'd like to move to item 16, and then we can take a lunch break.
Item 16 is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. Today, we have three appointments for consideration. The first is for the Air Pollution Control Hearing Board. We have a vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2021 for a public member, and we have an application from William Cover. We have a vacancy on the Central Sierra Economic Development District for a vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2021 for a public member alternate. We have an application from Craig LaFarg. And lastly, we have a vacancy on the Law Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring 12/31/2020 for an attorney, and we have an application from Sarah Decay, who is an incumbent.
Oh, we can't do that.
Deal with the first two.
Hey, if someone else wants to take all the minutes and deal with the Law Library Board, they're welcome.
Are you in a conflict?
No, she's not. Mr. Mills, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, is there any public comment on these appointments? Bring it back to the board. May I have a motion?
Aye, so move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli, and second by Supervisor Garamendi. All in favor? Aye, passes on a 401 absent vote. We will take off the rest. Okay, it's quarter after. How about, is an hour enough time for everyone?
About 1:30.
All right, 1:30. We'll be back at 1:30.